Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, December 20. The hour is now 7:00 PM. This is the Select Board's meeting. And I'd like to ask everyone if they would stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, out of the gate, I want to just note that our colleague, Mr. Kelly, unfortunately, he's under the weather, so he won't be joining us this evening. And I didn't want you to confuse members of the Planning Board with Mr. Kelly, who's absent. So the first item we have at 7:00 involves a presentation from NIMCOG about a topic important to many communities, but also Tewksbury in particular. So we intentionally asked the Planning Board to join us this evening. So I want to welcome Mr. Fratelli and Mr. Champa from the Planning Board. They're going to join us for this first presentation, and we'll take it from there. So let me just invite Jennifer Rayet from NIMCOG to join us.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Rayt. I'm the Executive Director of Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, NIMCOG.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me here. And I'm going to run through this presentation and be, I'll be happy to stop at any time if you want to ask a question. But I also could just run through this and then we'll, at the end, we can discuss it.
We're not bashful. We'll jump in if we have a question.
I figured as much. So, actually, I'll start here.
Is this the same presentation as the?
It's the same presentation in the packet.
All right.
Yes, everything that was posted.
I can't see that, so I'll follow here.
Yeah.
All right.
For everybody behind me. So, first off, NIMCOG is the regional planning agency for Greater Lowell. We're based in Lowell. We serve nine communities, which includes Tewksbury. We're very pleased to be able to work with the town on many different planning activities, transportation, economic development, housing. We're working on your housing production plan right now. Jane is a member of our council as the Assistant Treasurer, as well as others from the town who participate. We're very pleased for the level of participation. We're also working on coordinating with managers and administrators across the region. And housing is a very large topic that comes up in many of our discussions. MBTA Communities is something that, what I want to talk about in this presentation is just outline, first, what the guidelines are, what they mean, and answer any questions that you might have about just sort of the basics of the guidelines. Explain to you what the steps are for complying with the requirement, including any upcoming deadlines that are happening. And then essentially just summarize sort of where this puts the town in the future and how that might align with some of your current planning or future planning activities. And then with everything, no matter what I say, it's all backed up on this website, which is mastack.gov/MBTACommunities. Everything that I'm going to tell you this evening can be found on that website, with a couple of exceptions, which is what pertains specifically to Tewksbury. But MBTA Communities, I'm going to talk about the legislation, the guidelines, some additional things for you to think about, the timeline, and then we'll have a little discussion. So the legislation came out of 2021's Economic Development Bond Bill, which Governor Baker at that time signed into law. It was really about addressing economic recovery and centered funding, because it's a bond bill. But it also incorporated specific legislative changes to the law, including the Zoning Act, which is 48, in order to make those funding opportunities a reality. Because you could put as much funding as you want to into housing and economic development, but if the underlying zoning in a lot of communities makes it very challenging in order to proceed with those types of initiatives, the governor felt that centering housing choice was really central to achieving the Economic Development Bond Build goals. So this all came from that particular time period of 2021, centered around housing choice. Housing choice at that time, when it was being discussed, was not really focused as much on MBTA Communities. It was actually focused on lowering the voting threshold for certain types of amendments to zoning that would advance housing choice. And by that, it means multifamily housing, mixed-use development, open space residential design, accessory dwelling units, basically anything that would lead to the production of more housing on any particular site or location. And it meant that the zoning, the voting threshold would be lowered both at a town meeting type of format in government, or, you know, whatever your charter might be, a city council meeting, but it also pertains to special permitting. So where you might need four members to vote regularly, you would only need three, depending upon the type of special permitting authority that you have in place. So that's really where this came from, was the housing choice was central to it. MBTA Communities, the 3A requirement, is just in relation to those communities that are designated under state law as an MBTA community, of which, at the time when this was filed, there were 175. Two more were added very recently with the extension of the South Coast Rails. Now there's 177. All of the communities, what the MBTA legislation talked about, was that they had to zone for a reasonable size in which multifamily housing, which has a specific definition in this law, need to be permitted as right, as of right, meaning there can't be any sort of special permitting process or other additional discretionary process involved, as of right, 15 units per acre. Also, you can't have any restrictions for age. It has to be suitable for families with children. And it has to have other specific characteristics that are defined under the final guidelines. This is what the MBTA Communities map looks like, in case you were wondering. But it is, it does have sort of a little, there's a gradation in colors. There are four of those different colors, and they pertain to a type of community, meaning that there's a certain level of service that's related to each one of these community types. Those types are leading from the outer or the central part of the MBTA Community Map outward is rapid transit, commuter rail, adjacent communities, and adjacent rural towns. Tewksbury is an adjacent community, and you're surrounded by one other adjacent community and four commuter rail communities. So each one of these community types, based upon their level of service, has different capacity requirements and size requirements in order to meet the MBTA goal. So the goal is 15 units per acre, but in the final guidelines, there was a specific number of housing units that must be produced as part of that capacity. So based on, at that, again, Tewksbury's 2020 number of total housing units, which is 12,139 units. The minimum multifamily housing unit capacity that a district would need to provide is 1,214 units. That's 10% of that total, for obviously. This is different than 40B. I know 10% sounds familiar to you, but it is just simply the number that applies to this type of housing. Additionally, the minimum land area covered must be at least 50 acres, and half of it has to be contiguous with nothing less than five acres. And part of that is because of what I'm going to talk about in terms of what qualifies. Part of what would need to be qualified district would be something that's ideally neighborhood scale and not a single development site. When we're talking about this type of multifamily housing, you might immediately see something in your mind that looks like multifamily housing in the town right now. But it actually means very broadly, a building with three or more residential dwelling units or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. So it's a very specific definition of multifamily housing. And when you start to look at it a little bit more expansively, it's basically everything in this category of what a lot of people in the housing field and planning field are calling the missing middle, as in a type of housing that you don't see getting produced all that often. The reason you don't see it getting produced is because there is no allowance for it right now in our communities. So that's why this law is in place, is to allow for this kind of byright housing, meaning duplexes, side-by-side, a four-unit building, courtyard-style building, cottage court, the other types of, the other building typologies that are noted here. What we do see a lot of typically is mid-rise or higher-density multifamily housing or detached, single-family homes. Not a lot of that in between. This law is aiming to get to that type of housing in between, which will meet housing needs locally as well as... As of right, as I mentioned in the beginning, means that it cannot go through any other sort of discretionary zoning approval process or special permit or variance, et cetera. It really is a building permit by right. So going a little bit deeper, you also cannot require additional elements that you don't already require for that same type of multifamily use, meaning higher energy efficiency requirements, some sort of third-party certification or verification, additional studies, combining it with commercial uses, byright requiring that it have to have commercial. But you could do site plan review. You currently have some allowance for that right now in your zoning bylaw, so you may be able to require site plan review for as-of-right uses. But you can't impose unreasonable requirements. Additionally, you can include some level of affordability, where potentially it's not more than 10% of the total units, but there are some exceptions where there could be something that would apply to make it a little bit more affordable or increase that level of affordability. Again, there's no, you cannot have any age restricted, age-restricted housing. It has to be suitable for families. There is a compliance model and a workbook that NIMCOG is currently working with all of our communities throughout the region that need to comply with this on making sure that we understand how to use the compliance model. Basically, it'll be something that we can use when we're ready to determine whether or not the zoning district that we're starting to develop does actually comply with the law. And it's based upon the gross density. It is, the gross density is based on also developable land, what can and cannot be developed. And for this purpose, there's a whole bunch of things that are excluded from what is considered developable. That includes publicly owned land that is not deemed appropriate for housing, anything related to, you know, natural resources, public and private rights of way, as well as other restrictions that you might have on specific types of land for various types of protection, agriculture, natural resources, again, water resources. There is allowance for, you know, using some public land, but again, it has to have been identified as a site for housing, could have been done so in your housing production plan, or been designated by the public owner as part of a disposition or redevelopment. So any state-owned land, for example, that where the housing has been discussed as central, that could be potentially developable under this framework. And so it just simply means that when you're thinking about the land area and then what's excluded, you end up whittling it down to whatever number of acres you have that need to then meet the gross density capacity. There are a number of other additional considerations that we would be working through with the town potentially to figure out what that gross density requirement would look like in Tewksbury, which would likely include a number of sub-districts and other areas where we would want to make sure that we have enough land in order to meet the ultimate requirement. So why, I started with talking about housing choice and how, you know, it's great to have funding for housing and economic development, but not if you can't use it. But there are other reasons why it's important to comply, and one of them is, well, all of it, all of these are actually related to goals that you already have stated publicly in your planning documents, like your master plan and even your current, your housing production plan from 2017 to 2021. We're currently working with the town, as I mentioned, on your update to that plan. But it makes you be able to maintain your eligibility for various state funding programs for housing, economic development, infrastructure, and transportation, which, based upon your master plan, is very important to the town and also, of course, in terms of your current activities, seems to also be very relevant, because you consistently pursue other funding opportunities. This will keep you in a position to be able to continue to pursue those opportunities. It aligns with housing production plan goals in terms of meeting specific types of needs, like workforce housing, rental and ownership options, and a wide range of residential types that you've stated in your planning documents are very important to meeting town unmet housing goals and needs. And that includes the more than 600-plus renter households who are currently severely rent burdened. It also, of course, keeps you ahead and being proactive and compliant, rather than risking any sort of non-compliance. Glad to talk about what that might mean. And some, you know, additional considerations are just, you know, it doesn't mean that you need to think about the infrastructure capacity right now. This is simply the zoning. It also doesn't require you to build right now or build 10 years from now even. It is just putting the zoning in place in order to move you forward, to be legal and whatever is practical within the relevant framework of Tewksbury in order to move this forward. So the actual housing production wouldn't happen immediately, it would happen at some point in the future. So a little bit about the timeline and then the next steps and the role that NIMCOG is playing in all of this. Last month, DHCD released that compliance model and workbook. We've been fully trained on how to utilize that. Our staff are currently working with it. By the end of next month is a deadline to, for the town to submit an interim compliance action plan, which simply is outlining how you're going to work on achieving compliance with this requirement by the end of 2024. And it will outline sort of some of the limitations that you have, some of the areas where you might be looking or considering where this might be possible, and the current zoning that you have in place that may or may not be compliant, and then sort of outlining a timeline for public process in order to move this forward by the date you must comply. Also applying for technical assistance from our agency. Right now, we are providing the town with technical assistance, but that sunsets at the end of January. So there will be another round where you'll need to pursue some assistance from us if you want our assistance to develop the actual zoning or help with any public process or education or things of that nature. And then, of course, engaging, I would guess rigorously, in some public engagement and planning process, which would likely occur over the course of next, the next calendar year and possibly into 2024, with enough time to allow the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is the agency that will be reviewing all of this for compliance to move forward prior to a town meeting, so like 90 days before you file any warrant. So somewhere in the middle of 2024, if you're aiming for a fall special town meeting in 2024 is when you'd probably need to be ready to go, ready to submit it to DHCD, to go to a fall town meeting, and then ultimately, if you are, if it's successful at that town meeting, to be compliant with the zoning by December 31st of 2024. And of course, at any point in time, you can go to that website that I mentioned to review a lot of different materials and information, webinars, educational informations, all sorts of things are posted there. So our agency is providing a whole range of assistance, depending upon where you might be at in terms of your staff capacity or your boards or other members of the public who want to be engaged. We're providing direct technical assistance to the towns. That includes everything from documenting existing conditions, helping with GIS and mapping. We can draft the zoning amendments. We can help to look at potential development sites. We can also assist with that community engagement process, things of that nature. Currently, we're assisting Bilica, Drake, Tingsboro, and of course, your community. But we anticipate assisting all of the seven communities that need to comply. And then on top of that, or sort of a higher-level layer, is the regional piece. What does this all look like once you put it together with the seven out of the nine communities in a compliance? Like, what would that be as a regional strategy? Sort of convening meetings at the regional level to better understand that, assist with any funding applications and additional guidance as needed, and beginning the development of a broader housing strategy for the region. That's it. Thank you.
That's a lot of it.
That was a lot of it, and I'm glad you talked about any of everything that I just said. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and for the documentation. It was helpful. Let me, let me invite our guest to lead us off. I don't know, do either of you have any questions that you want to pose for?
So, just doing some math in my head and processing a lot of it, so, but it sounds like just what we need to come up with is 80 acres at 15 units an acre, plus or minus of developable, developable property for this program.
Potentially, a minimum of 50 acres. The minute, the minimum is 50.
Okay, I'm going by the 1,215 units at a density of 15 units per acre.
If you ended up with needing to meet that level of compliance, then yes, you'd probably need about 80 acres.
But not all in just one clump of land.
Not in all one place, no, not necessarily, no. And it could be dispersed, and you could have sub-districts, but not lower than five
So I guess what I would come back with is, you know, I know, I do, I do a lot of work in Boston. I've seen a lot of residential growth in Boston, but I've also seen, and I just Googled it just to have a, hopefully factual number, because it is the internet, but median rents in Boston are up 55% in the past decade. So if we build all of this, how do we know that we're not going to end up in a similar situation that, you know, from 2024 to 2034, we've built the 1,215 units and all the rents have gone up 50%? And obviously, some of that was probably going to happen anyway. So what, you know, can you tell me a little bit more about the controls that will be put in place to make sure that this improves our affordability and doesn't hurt it?
Well, the first part is that the region itself, including Tewksbury, has a need for more housing, and that producing more housing actually does help with affordability overarchingly. So having more access, more options that are available at a rental level and at an ownership level at various price points actually can help with affordability overall. So that's, that's part one. The second thing is that you could have an affordability requirement. Depending upon the level of affordability requirement that you currently have in your zoning bylaw, you may want to apply that to the MBTA Community zoning districts. So that portion of any development will have the affordability requirements that you're talking about. The rest of it would be a market rate development, but it may vary depending upon the scale or the level of development. One of the slides that I was showing that had the different typologies, if you're talking a three-family or a four-family, you know, typologies that may not exist here right now, but produce a lot of options for housing, may actually lower the price point overall. So that, that is part of the goal.
Okay. Again, just, not that we are Boston or will ever be Boston, Boston has a lot of other things that factor into why its cost of living is so high, also offers a lot of services and whatnot. But Boston has all of that and increased their housing stock. The more they increase it, the further behind they seem to get as far as affordable units and median home price, median rental price, all of that.
They're actually, while it seems like, and when you say Boston, I don't know if you mean Boston, the city of Boston itself. Do you mean that?
Yes, the actual city.
The city of Boston, yeah. I mean, the city of Boston, the city of Somerville, basically a handful of communities have done a lot of production. But a lot of other communities throughout the greater Boston and in this area as well have not produced enough housing over decades now. It's been about three decades of underproduction of housing that has been documented. So in other words, the last time that we were really producing enough multifamily housing to kind of keep ahead of the curve and maintain a lot of housing options and have greater housing diversity and also help with address residential segregation was in the 1970s. And so even with 40B, which has been the most significant contribution towards multifamily housing in suburban locations, we're still behind. So there's basically a need to continue to produce housing, including in Boston. Boston has a need where they have smaller households. They're losing families. So even if you have a smaller household, for every single one of those people, they still need a housing, a home to live in.
Sure. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fratelli?
Yeah, thank you very much, and thanks for the presentation. You know, in Tewksbury, we worked pretty hard to get our affordable housing numbers up. We were at that 10% for a while, and due to the last census, we have dropped down, but we continue to work pretty hard to get that number up. And, you know, we're a pretty well-developed town. There's not many new developments that are potential sites for, you know, a minimum of five acres and 50 acres or whatever it is. But, you know, I think being on the Planning Board, we work pretty hard to get developments coming to town, to get affordable housing for residents of the town. And I know we'll continue to work hard to get that and work with you as far as in NIMCOG and your group to work jointly, you know, to get some of these things done and make it a better town for all the residents here. So, you know, I don't know of many areas in town that are, that are big enough to, you know, accommodate, you know, a 50-acre development, maybe Livingston Street, but that's all state-owned land. But who knows with the new governor coming in and her new plans, who knows? But that's all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Any of my colleagues on the side of the table?
Yeah. So I know we have, the new administration hasn't started, but is there any, are they going to continue? Any thought process on that? They, they're going to, this is going to continue forward with the new administration?
This is now the law. So it is a law you have to comply with. And if anything, I think the new administration will continue to make it a priority and central theme in their housing element. Everything that I, every indication that I've seen at this point is that housing is a really critical component of the new administration and that they will also see that as a way of supporting communities across the Commonwealth in order to support those goals. I also think that on the other side of that is, climate is important to them and other, you know, other priorities have emerged as being relevant. And I think that they might look at it similar to the Baker administration, where that housing is an intersection with a lot of other things and goals that we're trying to achieve as a state. The biggest one is really economic vibrancy and resiliency, especially recovering from the pandemic. I think housing is a central theme to that, especially in the greater Lowell region. But I think the new administration will continue to see it as a priority, and if not, emphasize it even further.
The concern that we seem to have in our community that I hear from the residents is it's, there's a need for people to work. There's a need for affordable housing. There's a need for senior housing. We have great need for all types of housing. There's not enough mitigation. So when we build developments, you know, each development comes in, they look at it, they go through a parcel, they look at something, and they come through, and then a traffic survey is done, and they say, you know, this doesn't meet or exceed any of the thresholds. Okay? And that's one development. But then there's one built across the street, there's another one built further down the street, and there's another one built down the street. And then when you put all those together, the thresholds start to go over, but that's not the way they're reviewed. So when you're talking about building parcels and putting five acres with minimum of 15 units, so you're talking, you know, at least, you know, 75 units or whatever may be going into each, each of this five-unit area? So, you know, is, you know, it's great that the state puts in guidelines, but, you know, is there anything that's a benefit to get additional mitigation by following this plan? Like, does the state say if we go along and we join this pact, you know, then because of that, we're putting more money toward mitigation to helping those communities? You know, we've gone in a lot of hits from the state with, you know, stormwater fees, all types of things that we're getting, and it doesn't seem like we're not getting enough mitigation to our communities to help with the traffic problems that we're having. And so, I mean, is there anything, a part of this, that they add additional mitigation for?
Not specifically part of this, because this is really just about adopting the zoning. But I do think that what you're talking about, there are opportunities to look at funding or look at other options to address the issues that might need to be mitigated in a specific neighborhood or more broadly in the community, if you're talking like a corridor. One of the things that I mentioned is that it is not just really one site. It's looking at sort of a neighborhood more broadly or a corridor. And yes, potentially, we can find funding or identify other opportunities that could help the town. For example, if we were talking about development in a certain area, I'm not naming a certain area in town, because that'll be too much. But, but if you're, we're talking about some particular area of town where we want to see an increase in bus service from the LRTA, which would require some funding and would require some support, maybe adding amenities like a bus shelter or other types of elements, that would be the kind of thing that I would say. And I know that that's not necessarily the type of mitigation you're talking about, but as an example, or other sort of pedestrian elements. I think that that would position this zoning process and planning process would actually position the town very nicely to access those other funding opportunities, to make those other things happen, instead of to develop a complete neighborhood.
My concern is, is that one of the things is, it just seems like the review of the Planning Board may be limited if it's something that's permitted by right, where if somebody's developing something and you come in and we may say, we want a decel lane, or we want something added to this development because we already have traffic impacts in that, and then says, well, this is permitted by right, you can't ask for that. So that's a concern. That's, we're limiting what we can do when we're looking at developments, and that's the last thing I want, is to be able to say, you know, if we're trying to create something that moves traffic, helps the residents, I mean, we have a lot of mixed use in this community, and if we have bottlenecks because of we have something that's on there, people will go around it. People will go to another area. And then you end up having, you know, issues, and people, and then you start using residential streets and cutting, you know, cutting through areas. So I like the fact that our Planning Board can ask for mitigation on specific things. And if, you know, when you're talking about the state, you know, one of the things, if we don't abide by it, then we don't get some of the funding. If we abide by it, there's no additional funding. I, I would like to see something of just saying, you know, especially... of just saying, you know, especially taking away their power to ask for mitigation on something that may impact the community. And that's a concern. That's all I have.
Just one, one follow-up to this is the site plan review is possible. So in a site plan review, I think this is where you could potentially address some of the issues that you're talking about. Not, not from a mitigation like specific to funding from, or, you know, extracting something from a developer, which also, impact fees aren't actually allowed in Massachusetts. So mitigation has a very specific, a specific meaning here. But that's something that I think in a site plan review process, you can actually, you know, consider. And that's something that, again, we would explore that with the town. Also, I would encourage everybody to take the long view of this, you know, that we're looking at a big, a big long view picture of the town and what, what we see today, what we're talking about today, some of the concerns that we're experiencing today may not be the same types of concerns or worries of the future. So that, that's just a couple of things to add there. But I, I completely understand where, where you're going with this. I do think that it will access, you will be able to access additional funding as a result of being compliant with this. It is also something you need to comply with.
I know it's an initial presentation, so I don't want to be, you know, cheering and pop, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'm glad to answer any other questions as a follow-up at any time.
That's, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Krabman. I appreciate that. And I, I think to your point, it, it should go on our short list of discussion items with our delegation too, because it goes to that potential funding. So we can't get it, but they can help us get it. So let me turn to my right. Ms. Wellman, you have some questions or comments?
Sure, yeah, briefly. Thank you, Jenny. It's nice to see you again. And as usual, you are the subject matter expert, so I appreciate your presentation. And I thank our planning board colleagues for being here this evening. I just had a couple of quick comments or questions. Looking to the affordability aspect, which you did address previously, it doesn't seem to really help our lower mid-threshold housing requirements at all. There's nothing really in this to do anything for 30%, 40% AMI.
Unless your current inclusionary zoning bylaw requires something like that, that I'm not aware of, then it may not.
Yeah. No, I don't think it does. Is there any requirement to be near bus, bus lines or transit of any kind because we're an adjacent community?
Because you're an adjacent community, there's not any locational requirement. There's a recommendation about where you should potentially consider, like what you just suggested, but it is not required.
Okay. What is the intersectionality with 40B? How, are we chasing kind of two goals at the same time? One's more short-term, one's more long-term, to your point, taking a long view?
Yeah.
But as we develop these 1,200, you know, units, that's going to change our numbers? And there's not all that affordability aspect sort of built in? There's some, but not enough?
It changes your denominator in your 40B calculation, right? As you produce more housing, any type of housing in the community that you're doing right now is changing the denominator if you're not also increasing affordability at the same time. And that would continue.
Right. Yeah. This seems to just keep the same formula, so it doesn't help us kind of, you know, get away, get, get closer to that number that we're looking for.
Yeah.
For land, that's Article 95 land, which is some of the state-owned land up there. Is there going to be any sort of process, have you heard of any sort of, anything that would allow the state to use some of that land? If it's contiguous with other housing that, like we already have?
Yeah, basically, it would be excluded land unless it's specifically designated for housing.
Yeah, okay.
By the state agency who owns it.
Yeah. That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Of course.
Great job.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, thank you for all the great information. I know I personally had a lot of questions, and the administration's been great in getting me the answers they could. And understanding you are just the messenger, didn't write the law, didn't pass the law. In short, this appears to me to be all stick, no carrot, for lack of a better phrase, where we have to provide 1,214 units. We've had discussion around state land. What people don't realize is most of the open space in Tewksbury is state land. There's not a lot of developed property left. And we've, as Mr. Fratelli said, we've been struggling for a few years to get above that 10%. Luckily, it sounds like our zoning, our bylaw will keep us, allow us to apply that 10% requirement, so that should keep us safe there. But the, the real concern is where does another 1,200 units go? And I know that's something we have to solve for. But I think it's going to be a, a challenge, and I've heard that kind of echoed from most everyone up here. So not a, not a big fan of the legislation. I know we, we have to do it, and if we don't, we lose access to state funding. But as has been raised during this session, it would be great if we had access to additional funding to support this. Water, Route 38, side streets. Again, there's nowhere for it to really go, so anywhere it goes is going to require significant mitigation. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I just want to focus very briefly in my comments around the timeline, because I'm trying to do my thought process here. And Mr. Montori, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were to target October 24 for our town meeting, the warrants typically close, I think, in August, early August. If we're required to have DHCD, at le, at least have 90 days to review, that puts us in April or May. So we're talking about a year and a half from now. So that's a short fuse, having just come off a 20-year major rewrite of our zoning and asking voters to support that at town meeting. So I think we have to be really proactive in terms of laying out our action plan. And I, I know you've given it some thought, Mr. Montori. I don't know if you have any comments about that. Alex might have some, some thoughts. But we, we don't have really a lot of time here. It's a short fuse. And it brings me to a question. If, in your outline, it says the deadline is 12/31/24 for the town to approve zoning. So if we go to town meeting in October of '24, what happens if town meeting says, no, we don't like the proposed zoning? And we're defeated?
I mean, at the moment, I don't have an answer to that. Right now, all I know is that you have to be compliant. But I would guess that, you know, depending upon how the next couple of years go, things may be adjusted by DHCD, and there may be some, you know, amnesty.
Yeah. I'd like to explore that, because we can do everything right at this table, and the planning board can do everything right at their table, but the voters can completely disagree with what we recommend.
Yeah.
And if there's a, a financial consequence or a, you know, some other item that's going to hurt the community, that's something we certainly should be aware of. And I'd like to know that. So if you don't mind, maybe we can explore that offline a little bit. Do you have any comments, Mr. Montori?
No, I mean, we, we have started to talk about it internally, so we'll be prepared to meet the deadlines. We don't have to wait until October, town meeting to bring it forward. We could bring it forward at the May town meeting. If we did wait till October and it didn't pass, we'd come back in November, you can come back in December, you can come back in, you know, as many, you know, we, we have the ability to call town meetings. But, I mean, I think our plan will be not to try to cut it that close. We will be ready. We've already started talking about it. So I'm not too worried about the deadlines.
Yeah. Well, okay. Very good. All right.
Robust engagement.
What's that?
We'll need a robust engagement process.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a process. So my last question will be, you mentioned technical assistance, or continuing technical assistance, and, and our current agreement with you expires in about a month or so. So what is entailed? And are we already engaged in that effort?
We are already talking with staff about-
All right, great.
-the next round of assistance. Yes.
All right. Okay. So I'll rely on-
Yeah, right now, our assistance basically carries you through submitting the action plan.
Okay.
And us reviewing it and providing any guidance as needed, making this presentation, answering any questions along the way.
Yeah.
Just sort of helping to position you to be ready to go, doing some preliminary studies and maps, but not mostly just to explore the compliance model. And then we'll be ready to help you if you are interested in our assistance in, starting in February, basically.
Well, I have no doubt we will want to take advantage of that. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I want to thank you for the presentation and certainly the prep that you did to put the PowerPoint together. It's very informative, and no doubt we'll have some more conversations about it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So I'm going to thank my planning board colleagues for joining us. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us.
Happy holidays to you. And I know you're going to stay right here for a minute, and, and we will move to our next item.
I'm impressed with you.
Okay. So while we had you here tonight, and thank you for, for doing this for us, we, we also wanted to just briefly talk about the municipal digital equity planning program. And this is new to all of us, so we're just, I think, tonight looking for just that 30,000-foot picture. And-
Sure.
We can probably take this under advisement and, and do some more follow-up as necessary. But do you want to give us a little bit of a-
Yes.
-look behind the curtain on that?
Absolutely. Yeah. This is, um, this is basically a program through the Massachusetts Broadband Institute. Don't know how familiar you are with it. I'm glad to answer questions about it. I, I did see that you posted a lot of the reference material-
Yeah.
-including a plan that had been produced by MAPC and some other documents from NIMCOG about the, what we're talking about here. So it is a program offered by them. It has a rolling application date. The benefits are basically to help identify digital equity needs and recommend solutions for those needs. We're looking at this as a partnership and also a regional process.
Yeah.
So right now, we have Chelmsford, Drakett, Lowell, Pepperell, and Westford potentially considering being part, and Tingsborough being part of this process. So we're looking for, and we're hopeful that Bill Recker and Dunstable will also join in. But so far, we've been able to confirm that those other communities are certainly interested. And what it means is that we would be applying together, with one of the communities being the lead community, potentially that community being Lowell, because UMass Lowell will be basically providing partnership services to help with implementation of anything that we talk about in the plan. And the plan basically would be to provide direct assistance to the communities through a, a digital equity planning localized process and then a regional process with recommendations at both the local and regional levels. And by digital equity, I'm not talking about installing broadband or, you know, something necessarily like hard infrastructure. It could be things like, you know, making sure that everyone has affordable access to the internet and then the tools they need to productively access, things of that nature. So it's also like equipment, you know, training, education around digital equity, language assistance that might be needed. So there's a lot of, a lot of different examples that are actually provided in one of those handouts about what it could entail. We also imagine that it would address the needs of potentially people who are, you know, older adults, younger people, people with lower incomes, people with limited literacy or English skills, a lot of others who basically face barriers to access to, say, an affordable digital options in their homes or, or elsewhere. So we're hoping that basically by, that we would put together an application that will be by the end of January. And so what we were actually hoping to get from tonight is maybe just a, a verbal commitment or a sense, if not this evening, by early January. I don't know when your meeting in January, but at some point in early January-
Ten.
-to know if the town is interested in being part of this regional application process. And then if you are, all it would entail is if you have a specific staff person who might be the point person, we feel that it will actually be limited input from staff because it's mostly just a regional process that's happening with NIMCOG's support as well as potentially MAPC's support in doing the actual planning activities. But we do need basically a, a point of contact and the town's commitment to, you know, host some sort of planning workshop in the community.
Okay.
So if, whenever you are inclined, that would be the kind of thing that we're, we are seeking at some point in time. And, and the commitment could come in the form of basically a letter signed by, by Richard.
Got it. So may I just ask one question on your, your summary, FAQ kind of document? It talks about it could be funded through APPA funds. And I'm just curious, are you referencing APPA funds that we are accessing or that, that you are or others are? Because we've committed ours.
Yes. Yeah, no, it's-
So I'm curious about that.
So NIMCOG, in the next, basically for the next 18 months, we have access to additional federal funding through ARPA. That's basically augment to our technical assistance that we may be able to access and utilize to support any of these types of initiatives.
So we can ride on your coattails-
Yes.
-from a financial perspective. Okay.
And it is meant to position the town to access other funding opportunities where you might need to purchase additional equipment. Or it could be about broadband or other types of, you know, public Wi-Fi or other resources.
And in your experience, we have two carriers here in Tewksbury. So in the past, as we've negotiated with them, they've provided different resources to the community. So have you seen that in other communities that relates to this type of issue?
Yeah. And we would want to engage those providers, you know, utilities as part of any of the conversations.
They could potentially be part of the solution as well.
Absolutely. Yeah. And often have additional resources.
Okay. So we meet next on the 10th.
Okay.
And if we were to take a vote at that time, is that sufficient within your timeline?
I think that's, that's absolutely sufficient. Please, take your time to consider it and talk about it and think about it. But we would love to have the town be a part of this regional engagement and to offer some sort of a charade or community workshop where we can talk about this further and figure out what makes sense for the town.
Generally speaking, I can say I think Tewksbury has been a terrific partner in regionalization. And we've been advocates for that for years. So I, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but my gut would tell me that if, if this is a regionalized opportunity, we, we would probably take advantage of it. But I'd like to digest this a little bit, and we have one colleague who's not here this evening, so I want to give him a chance to weigh in as well.
Yeah.
If that's okay.
Absolutely.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Montori?
Just, you know, from an administration standpoint, we would want to participate in the regional approach. We would assign either the assistant town manager or the community development director to, to, to be involved. So, but we'd be excited to be part of it.
Okay. Great. That's good to know. All right.
Just one other thing to add is that when you do review further the materials that were provided, the MAPC report is a good example of what you could get out of this because that is illustrating what a regional application looks like for three communities. Of course, three, you know, very specific types of communities. You might not be those communities. But what it demonstrates is the need for data gathering and analysis of this particular topic. And that's like one of the big, it, it recommendations, and it could be policy-related, but it's also about data needs and understanding of, you know, sort of what are the equity gaps in your community.
I would envision our needs are going to be very different than the communities that were referenced in that report. So-
They would probably be different.
Yeah.
But it also might not be the people who you think currently have digital access or other equity issues. So-
Sure.
-this would allow us to, you know, be able to provide that sort of analysis and quantitative and qualitative.
Okay. All right. Do my colleagues have questions or concerns? Okay. Mr. Mackey, why don't you lead us up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just one question. This is, there's a lot here, so I'm really looking forward to diving into this. Whenever we start talking digital or cyber, I, my ears perk up. My one question is, if we're talking about potentially providing public internet or potentially providing access in certain buildings, there's obviously a lot of security concerns that come with that. And whenever we start implementing security, it becomes very expensive very quickly. So my question is, is the security needs a part of this? And the part B of that question is, is NIMCOG going to be involved in the distribution of the federal funds for cybersecurity that came out of last year?
I'll answer the second question first, which is no, we are not the recipient of that type of funding, nor the, you know, one who's just, you know, sending out disbursements to communities. However, if the community, the, if the, if the community cabinet model continues, I don't know what the new administration will have, but perhaps cybersecurity will be something like in a community compact. And if the region wanted to pursue something like that, then maybe NIMCOG could be the entity that distributes that sort of funding or resource through cybersecurity. To address the, the first part of the question, I guess, sure, we could potentially explore what it means for those security issues. I know that in, we, we've done this, the MBI actually has a lot of resources. And in touring some of the sites where they've done digital equity planning, cybersecurity is a big piece of it. And so they do have some models and examples of how that could be explored. I don't know the extent to which that factors into this planning process, but I'm sure that we could, I'm sure it'll come up. It's a good point, especially with public Wi-Fi.
Thank you. Yeah. And the, the reason was, I know MAPC is going to be involved in, so DHS essentially identified certain community groups that would be the first line for those distributions. So I didn't know if you guys were going to be that for us. So-
Not unless, again- Not unless, again, through like the community compact, we would have to have that as being your top choice of cybersecurity as a region. And that has not been brought forth to us at any point in time that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Wom.
Yep, thank you. I had the pleasure of attending a webinar on this and then talking to Chris Hayes as well, and he was fantastic. I think one thing that's important to remember is that there's a brand-new billion dollars of funding for digital equity in Massachusetts, so specifically a billion dollars for this kind of work. And so being, utilizing some alacrity to sign on to this quickly opens us up earlier to that funding. So I think that's part of the reason why you're moving, trying to move it a little quickly. And so I fully support it. I think it's, what we know for sure from the pandemic is that there are lots of folks in Tewksbury that can't afford broadband internet, can't afford devices that can connect to the internet. And we also know that there is not equal speed of broadband internet in parts of town, which we hear sometimes from residents, but I didn't really know it was a thing. It's a thing. So, and part of this study will help tell us that information. So there's a lot of information that we can gather about what's available to folks in town. It's not, this is not about taking broadband the last mile to somebody's house. We're already there in Tewksbury. But it does offer so much more to folks, and that can be, you know, devices, media labs, training, services for our older population that isn't maybe digital native, you know, ELL, partnering with our school district to reach to those families. So there's a lot of opportunity here that I think is great for Tewksbury and fully support it. So we'll bring it up next month. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Mr. Krappman, you have any comments, questions?
I have a number of questions, but, you know, I haven't had a chance to draw them into the, the answers may be in front of me. So I don't want to take up your time until I get a time to do some research. Thank you for bringing it to us, but I mean, there's, you know, as my colleagues have mentioned, there's a lot of things that's been our concern locally about the internet of, you know, cable access seems to be dwindling, which means we go on the way of a phone book. So we, you know, I would expect in over the next few years, somebody to come up with some other technology that we'll be dealing with that may come in front of us. And so I do have some, you know, questions about if that happens, how does this get impacted? But I'll save it all for that because it, just I got a million questions and I don't want to take up everybody's time. So, but thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let me just validate with you. If we meet on the 10th and we were to take, make a decision on that date, is that acceptable in your timeline?
Absolutely, yes.
I just want to make sure we're not throwing things out of whack.
Not at all, no.
All right, so I would just ask Mr. Motore if we can make sure this is on our agenda. And in the interim, if any of my colleagues and myself have questions, we can explore that and be prepared to discuss it on the 10th, okay? Awesome.
And you are also welcome to be in touch with me at any point in time. All my contact information is available. So please, if you have some more detailed questions, I'm glad to help on either this or the prior discussion.
Awesome. And I want to welcome you to Tewksbury in your new role, so thank you.
Thank you, thanks so much.
We appreciate all the information tonight.
Okay, you're welcome.
Have a great holiday.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Okay, we'll move to our 7/10 agenda item. This is a common vixural license and renewal application for Pushcart Cafe. Is there anyone here from Pushcart? There are some folks here from Pushcart. So first order of business would be to know who is sitting in front of us. So if you could each introduce yourselves and give us your name and address or affiliation, I'd appreciate that.
Dick Cucor, Woodland Design, 73 Emerald Court.
Private Briggs, Melon, oh, Melon Drive. How long ago was that? Navalus Road, Tewksbury.
Thank you.
81 Navalus Road, Jelaine Briggs, owner of the Pushcart, 1777 Main Street.
Thank you, okay. So do you want to explain what you're looking for tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we're, through some oversight, we're here to re-get our 2022 common vixual's license, which renewal hadn't come forward. And at the same time, the staff at the select board's office was very, very, very helpful in guiding us through the process, and we appreciate that very much. It gives us the opportunity to show you the proposed expansion plan that we have for the restaurant that we're about 95% complete on. Been working with the Board of Health and the Building Department, Fire Department. So we're hoping within the next few weeks to be able to occupy that new space. As you all know, COVID-19 has not been kind to anyone, especially the restaurant business. So this expansion is something that is a risk that's being taken on by the Briggs and the Holden family. But being one of the longest-tenured restaurants in Tewksbury with a couple of handful of others since 1985, we hope to continue the tradition and look forward to being able to procure the common vixural license.
Great, okay. On the application, it references floor space of 3,900 square feet. Is that current or future square footage?
I think that's the total.
Okay, of the new?
Somewhere I thought I broke it down to, oh, here it is up there. The total would be 39 something, yes.
3,900, yeah, okay, okay.
We have a little under 1,200 in the existing space.
Currently?
Yeah.
Super. All right, and you referenced, this is for 2022?
Well, what it is, is for 2023, I believe you.
All right, 2023.
But you renewed the other common vixural license, I think, on the 16th.
Last week.
And we were told that we were not included in that. So it's kind of a retro act of 2022 and new license for 2023.
Okay.
That's why it says, I think on the agenda, it says new permit and renewal of all permits.
Yeah, all right.
I guess there was a couple of restaurants that fell through the cracks.
Understood. Okay, do my colleagues have any questions? Okay. All right, it's good to see you expanding and investing in your business, which is an investment in our community. So I want to thank you for doing that and certainly wish you well. And having said that, I'll just ask if any of my colleagues have a motion on this matter.
Motion to approve the common vixural license for the Pushcart at 1777 Main Street.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so for the recording secretary's benefit, motion was made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Krappman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So that will be unanimous vote?
Both licenses?
Okay, thank you.
Was that for both licenses?
Yep.
We'll do, you want to do that for two, right?
2022, that was my question.
That was the intent, so, nice catch, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
All right, let me ask if Mr. Mancini's in the room. Come on up and pull up a chair, sir.
I have a couple of people with me, if that's okay.
Sure, they're welcome to join you if you like. All I ask is, just, I know who you are, but if you could speak into the microphone so others watching can.
Al Mancini, 15 Kenneth Lane.
Thank you. And just let me introduce, who's with you?
And I'm Susan Young from the Tewksbury Garden Club.
Thanks, Susan, welcome.
So I want to thank you for seeing us on relatively short notice. I followed your advice. I went and found some people, like-minded individuals, who were very much about saving trees. And starting with Mr. Gilbert, who, I'm sorry he couldn't be here. But I found out what we need to do to get classified as a tree city. And I was kind of surprised to find out that most everything is already in place. There are four primary things that we need to do, one of which is we need to have, this is, go ahead, Tom, you can talk for yourself.
Yeah, please, just introduce yourself so we can.
Tom Brancho, 30 Susan Drive and Chairperson of the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee.
Thank you, thank you.
So as you can see, I did bring some friends. What it is, is basically, as was, as I alluded to earlier, everything seems to be in place primarily. There are four key elements, one of which is a budget that you have to spend $2 per capita of person in the town. Population of 35,000, $2.70,000. Tom brought his notes. Anyway, so that, when I talked to Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Gilbert said that his suggested budget for next year is 113,000. So we're exceeding that by quite a margin. We have to have someone who I believe has a working knowledge of the tree. And Mr. Gilbert is a warden, tree warden. He's a arborist, he checks that box. We need to form a board, which is something that I'm thinking about doing, provided that everything gets to go ahead here. And the other thing we need, which is where you come in, is we need to have a, we need to recognize Arbor Day with a celebration and a planting of a tree. I don't know the downside of any of this. The designation for a tree city puts us in place to get grants because we have, we're taking care of our trees. And as I said, I believe that with everything already done, it's just a matter of checking off the box with the Arbor Day celebration. So that's kind of what I wanted to talk to you about. And Tom and Susan wrestled me to the ground in the parking lot and said they wanted to come. I tried to come up here myself, but they didn't, they wouldn't let me. So that said, I would like to give them an opportunity to talk if they would like to talk.
Sure, I would like to just say a few words from the, representing the garden clubs. The garden club has been existence in this town for over 50 years. And we have been celebrating Arbor Day with the, in various ways in the town, but most recently with the students in the elementary schools for probably at least 30, but celebrations of some sort for Arbor Day for approximately 40 years. We actually planted a tree, it's in the newspaper, at the old Foster School at one point. So we did actively plant trees. Currently, what we do is that we give out a tree sapling to all of the third graders in and around Arbor Day. We task the school with doing some education with the students about the, about the importance of trees. And they all get a little tree to take home. But what a tree city designation actually requires is that there be a more citywide, town-wide recognition of Arbor Day and not solely for the third graders, but something is done to really recognize the day for all of the town citizens. And that's what, having this proclamation from the tree city that is supported through the Arbor Day Foundation would accomplish, we would be able to raise the level of this awareness to something for all citizens of Tewksbury and not just our third graders who come home with a tree and mom and dad get to look at it and say, that's great. But, but we would have more education around, around what happens there. And that's something that the garden club has said that they would support in whatever way possible, that you would participate in that type of a town-wide education program.
Terrific, thank you. Mr. Brancho, you want to offer any comments?
Sure. Well, first of all, for those that aren't familiar with the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee, so we're basically charged by this group here.
We are a lot familiar.
Sort of oversee for everyone else in the room as well, but to sort of champion and ensure the implementation of the Open Space Recreation Plan, which is part of the overall town plan. And so when Mr. Mancini brought this to our attention, which I wasn't aware of Tree City before, we talked about it in our last meeting, which was Thursday, and we, you know, immediately found, you know, great alignment, you know, and support to that plan, right? And so the plan has nine, you know, is outlined by nine goals or objectives. And they align pretty well with several of those. And so we immediately supported that. We had a unanimous vote to come and show our support for this. One of the things that, just to sort of focus in on one of the elements that I see, you know, Susan mentioned the education aspect of it, you know, the awareness. Part of this comes, there's a recognition, there's a public recognition of what the town, how the town views this and the priority they put. And I think that part of that, that pride, you know, part of it's about the pride of the residents. They see this, they're, you know, a tree city. And what that does, it can help start a, sort of a self-sustaining, you know, positive cycle of that pride turns to, you know, engagement, it turns to taking care of our natural resources, which makes it better, therefore more pride and that kind of thing. So that's what we're looking at here. This is why we support it. We'd like you to support that, please. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, Mr. Johnson, and to piggyback on to the educational aspect, one of the first things I did was I talked to Wilmington as a tree city. So I was pointed towards Mr. Hayes, Robert Hayes, from the library. And I asked him what needed to be done, and he was the first one to lay out what we needed to do. And I also found out that there is a program at the library where they give seedlings out. So as I said, I mean, if we tie this all together, it's going to look pretty impressive, I think, with a lot of people participating. And as I said, my new friends from the tree city that I was talking to out in the parking lot, they also do things with trees. And I don't know the particulars, and you'll get, yeah, I'm giving you a shout-out. And the idea is that, I just think it would be really cool to have the town of Tewksbury celebrate trees. And I understand that I've come up here and quoted the Lorax, and Mr. Mackey asked me not to. So I won't do that again. But I just think it would be really, really good for Tewksbury to get behind this. That's why I wanted to do it.
I think we all appreciate your enthusiasm for the topic because you've been here a few times and your passion's pretty obvious. I just have one question, it may be more specifically directed to the town manager, but you alluded to it in your comments about the requirements. So if a board is required, is that something that the town maybe is involved with, Mr. Motore? Is that a private, non-town board?
It actually says either a town, a tree board or a department, and we have a department.
So we can double and cover that off, right?
We're covered by having the forestry division and a tree warden, so we're fine.
Perfect, okay, all right. So there's no additional infrastructure that we need?
No.
All right, okay. So for the benefit of people listening and watching, there is a draft proclamation that's been presented to us. I'm not going to read it, but in effect, it would declare the last Friday of each April as Arbor Day here in Tewksbury. And you've already heard from the three guests here about efforts that would potentially take place. And I'm sure there'd have to be some further discussion around the totality of that. But the spirit was pretty obvious as you were describing it. So let me ask if my colleagues have questions or any motions they wish to make.
I just have one quick question.
Mr. Krappman.
I know you were talking about you go into the schools and you do history of Arbor Day and the whole thing. But, you know, looking at, when I, every time I see this, I look up and I look at, I'll do like an aerial view of Tewksbury and say, is there an area that we've clear cut? Is there an area, other than the open lands and the ballparks and things like that? Looking at Tewksbury, it's very forest, if you look at an aerial view. And, you know, going back like 100 years ago, I know a lot of this was all farmland. So I'm guessing there was probably a lot less trees during that time. Was there any research or anything done into like how we've progressed over that time with additional? Because we have so much state land and it's, you go up, if you go up to that area, there's, you know, trees are enormous. They're all over the place. And you look at these areas, it seems like quite a number of trees that are out there. So I'm just wondering if there's any, been anything to look at, you know, as the increase of trees that have been going through the community. I mean, I know you go into a class on it, but has anybody looked at the historical aspect of it at all?
So I don't believe that there has been anything done. So, I don't, I don't believe that there has been anything done with looking at the historical aspect here. But the reason that it was designated as an issue back, out in Nebraska is because there had been such widespread cutting down of trees for the creation of farmland. So, I think the fact that we've had a lot of trees regrowing here in Tewksbury is a very positive thing. But I don't think that that needs to get in the way of us celebrating the fact that we have so many trees and declaring ourselves a Tree City and looking to maintain and sustain and grow the population of trees that we have here in town. One of the things that I have noticed is that there seems to be a fair amount of tree cutting that does occur whenever there, someone decides that they don't want, don't want to rake leaves, trees are cut down. My neighbor cut down all of the trees on their property just because they felt like they didn't want to deal with them. Someone else across the way just cut down two beautiful little trees, so now they are totally treeless on their property. And I think that it's a lack of education, that people don't understand the importance of trees and what they can actually and are actually doing for the environment. And by taking down one, two trees, three trees here and three trees there, it might not be visible in that aerial view, but it is very visible to my property because now my property has loads of sun from those trees that were cut down by my neighbors. And I went from having some nice shaded areas, partial shade, to a very, very sunny backyard, totally different environment for my property. And that's just on that, it's just a little micro environment. So, we have to think of those smaller environments when we're also thinking about why, why we have to look at trees, as well as looking at that big picture and that, that nice, you know, overview of what, what we can see on Google Earth of, of Tewksbury. There, there are trees that are coming down. And if people understand more about trees and what they can do for the environment, there's just a study that came out of the United Kingdom that there is a lot more sequestering of carbon that is occurring in trees than was previously understood. So, you know, we're learning, we know a lot about what trees can do, we're learning more about what trees can do. And if we continue to educate people, then maybe we won't be seeing this cutting down of so many trees in our town, too. So, you know, this will bring along some education.
The point that I was trying to make is that it's a positive thing, not a negative thing. I'm not trying to get somebody to continue to cut trees. What I was saying is, if we're trying to document this and say, "Not a thing," part of the conversation, say, "Over the last 100 years, trees have doubled in this community," or whatever it may be, because farmlands are, we don't have as much farmland. And like you said, you're talking about Nebraska, that may be one of the reasons they brought it up, because they're putting farmlands, we need farms. But that made part of the education thing, that Tewksbury has put many more trees. So, we have so much conservation land, so many, I mean, you can go up and you can see acres and acres and acres of trees. And if you look at the area, like I said, things, I'm not trying to make it in any way a negative way, I'm just looking that it's part of a promotion of what you're doing. It's something that you can say, you know, "Take a look at our community. It's beautiful." It's like, "Look at the green space, look at the areas we're having it." That's, you know, that's, that was the purpose of bringing it up, that it's, all of this was farmland, a lot of it was clear cut, and now there's a lot of conservation area and there's a lot of beautiful trees out there. So, I think that should just be part of it when you're talking about, you know, the classes when you're doing that, that's all.
The other thing, Mr. Kravman, I can't help but it ties in, it dovetails into the speaker to, that started the meeting with what Tewksbury's going to be facing in the near future. You know, it kind of makes me nervous, to be quite frank, about, you know, where you're going to find all this acreage. Well, I mean, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but it is something that got my attention, you know?
Yep. So, Mr. Mack, you have a comment?
One comment?
All right. And then we'll move along.
Okay. Well, I was going to go comment in motion, but I'll go comment and briefly.
That's good.
I'm very happy to see you here. I know you've, I want to just call out your tenacity. I know you've...
I don't get that reaction very often.
Listen, in my short time on this board, I've seen you a few times here, talking about the trees. We almost made it through without a Lorax reference, so, close enough. But again, you, you saw something you didn't like. Again, we haven't, you haven't liked what you've seen and there wasn't a lot that could be done about it, but you found a way to, to make a difference in something that is a positive way. So, I want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Wellman.
I concur with my colleagues who've commented on your tenacity. Thank you, and thank you for gathering friends together and, and working across groups. I really like the piece that you talked about, Tom, as an ethic of the community and increasing our pride and our awareness of trees and, and those that are around us. There was a tree cut down in the center recently that changes the entire look of the center when you drive down 38, and I was really dismayed to see that historical tree gone now. So, I really appreciate the work that you're doing, and I am going to make a motion to adopt this official proclamation for Tewksbury Tree City USA.
Okay. So, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Kravman, are you in favor? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, I am in favor as well. So, that's going to be unanimous, and I already put my autograph on this one, so I'll have you pass that around. So, thank you and congratulations, and Tewksbury will now celebrate Arbor Day on the last Friday next to April.
Thank you very much.
Be well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. You thought being on this board was boring. We started with housing, we moved to digital equity, we've had a restaurant request, and we just declared Tree City or Arbor Day. So, and now we're going to move to Treehouse Brewing Company, a hearing on a series of one-day beer and wine licenses. So, we do have a formal hearing notice. I'm going to ask if there's a motion by my colleagues to waive the reading of the notice?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor of waiving the hearing notice, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll make that unanimous as well. And just for those who are watching or present in the room, I'm going to ask the proponent for this request to just explain in a moment what they're asking for. But this is a request for a series of one-day beer and wine licenses largely through the month of January, and it looks like through the first nine days or so in February. And that would involve a temporary tent somewhere on the property, so they'll explain that to us. And then, if need be, we'll, we'll take some comments on, on that presentation. So, let me welcome the three of you. And if you could do me a favor and just speak into one of those microphones and introduce yourselves so we know who you are.
Sure, sure. Well, I'll start. Thank you for having us tonight. We're happy to appear, and it's been actually a really interesting meeting, and congratulate Tewksbury on being a Tree City. Sarah Magimorn, we've met before, Chief of Staff, Treehouse Brewing Company. I'm here with my colleagues, but I'll allow them to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nicole Jubert. I am the Project Delivery Manager for Treehouse.
Thanks, Nicole.
And my name is Allison Maisley. I am the Regulatory Specialist for Treehouse.
Okay. Thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you. Well, we'll try to make...
So, just explain what you're looking for, if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah. We'll, we'll try to make it quick. If I could ask the first slide to come up, probably everybody is familiar with this. This is a campus map, and Treehouse seeks approval for 30 one-day beer and wine licenses for the purpose of serving malt beverages. And if you look over to the left, that's the outpost we've been operating for Beverages To Go, pickup service there since October. And today, we're here to talk about those temporary licenses on the complete opposite side of the property in what was formerly the Two Mac Tavern. And then, we will erect a temporary tent structure right there on the patio, you see on the map there. We would like to operate January 6th through February 9th, all days except for Tuesdays. So, that gets us through the 30 one-day permits. And our hours of operations would be Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then on Sundays, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, if we could go to the, thank you. So, this is, if you've been familiar with ever visiting the Two Mac Tavern, that's the building that says Treehouse Brewery right there. The occupancy of the tavern is 99, and that shape, the rectangular on the patio, has an occupancy of 198. All beers that will be served as part of this temporary service will be served by certified Treehouse staff that are tips-trained in responsible alcohol service. Guests purchase their beer tickets online. It's the same system that you use on our, other, other locations across the state and in our farm in Connecticut. Upon arrival, guests will show their proof of age, and they'll be provided with a bracelet. That bracelet verifies that they are of legal drinking age. Each time a beer is served to a guest, either in the tavern building or in the tent, that bracelet is marked off. And we have a very strict three-beer maximum, so it doesn't matter if you were served in the tavern building or in the tent, it's three beers, we monitor that. And that's across all of our locations. So, as I said, drafts are going to be served in the tavern building, and we have, expect to have 10 different drafts in there. And then, no other beverages will be served, so it's just going to be beer. We're not serving beer, we're not serving wine or alcohol or seltzers, but water will be available to all guests. And we're not going to be preparing any food, using the kitchen, doing any cooking in there. Everything is going to be poured into plastic cups, which is all disposable. So, it's pretty simple, and we're excited to roll this out after the first of the year because we've had a great warm reception from the community of Tewksbury, and this is a great opportunity for us to just share our product with folks that might not have taught us yet or haven't been through the outpost for the Beer To Go, but they can come in in a, kind of a communal, community environment. And it's been really great. There's been people out there saying, "Oh, they're opening the 2nd," because the last wedding and event at Tewksbury Country Club is New Year's Eve. We plan on converting, doing construction within the clubhouse building, so as much as we would love to be open in the clubhouse January 2nd, we're going to be working hard to get open for golf season. So, this is a way that we can invite the Tewksbury community in to, you know, enjoy a pour in person amongst other community members. So, if you could go to the next one. This is kind of cool, a little sneak peek of some of the design stuff that we're doing, but this is a temporary bar. We call it Box Pop. And this will exist inside of that temporary tent structure, and then we hope to find a home for it elsewhere on the property, but it's just, it's like a storage container, but it's designed and, you know, branded as Treehouse. So, in the tent, we're going to be pouring cans, and so with the combination of drafts and cans, we expect to serve 14 different styles of beer, types of beer, which is nice because we'll get to introduce the, the community to a fuller amount of our product line. And as I said previously, it's that three-beer limit, whether you have a draft or, or get it in here. And then, the last have here is, we have restrooms that are in the tavern already, and then we'll be adding an additional five portable toilets exterior to the space. So, happy to answer any questions, but we're just, we're really, really excited to, you know, invite the community to be together in one space and, and enjoy our product.
Are these portable toilets in the, the back of what's now Two Mac Tavern? Or I'm, I'm having trouble orienting myself.
Yes. So, that abuts the McDonald's.
Got it. Okay.
Or the backside of, of the McDonald's. If you go, if you, if you go back to the campus map, you might be able to, yeah. So, right, yeah, all the way up in there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And, and I want to ask you, and if need be, the town manager can, can inject here, but you've communicated with all of the necessary town departments as far as permits and safety precautions, all the, all the things that are necessary. As far as you know, you have everything tied up?
That's correct. We have satisfied all of the comments. I believe Peak Event Service, who is, does these tents all over New England, you've probably been to an event and been in a, a Peak structure, they're pulling the permit for building, so they're handling that directly. We spoke with building commissioner today, and if there's any outstanding comments, we, we can't put it up until he's satisfied, so.
I agree. Okay. Anything you want to add?
I would just, as the board has done in the past, just make any votes contingent upon complying with town department requests.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, let me ask if my colleagues have any questions. We'll start there. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. And it's interesting, I just wanted to confirm a couple of things, and I have a couple of questions. So, there's no entertainment aspect to this proposal for these licenses? There's no music, there's no bands or anything that you intend to...
We have not requested an entertainment license for this. We hope to have some background noise, maybe a couple of speakers there to play music. There's a sound system within the Two Mac Tavern.
Right.
Building as it is now, but we're not putting on concerts or anything like that.
Sure.
So, we'll have to be entertained by our personalities.
Right. Yes, exactly. And it just for the, for residents to just to be aware that there's not going to be an external noise that's going on at 9 o'clock on a Sunday night or a Monday night.
No, this is winter month programming, so all of our service will happen in, in the interior.
Okay. So, have you done something like this at a similar project at a different property? And seeing a no, did you shake, have you done something like this?
Oh, no. We, we've done temporary pop-up events all over at our farm, at each of our locations. We did at the Prudential Center, we had a pop-up temporary event where it was really popular amongst the city of Boston. So, yeah, we've, we've done quite a few of these.
Yeah. So, you're experienced in, in doing this sort of event?
Absolutely.
That's what I wanted to get that.
Yeah. And the nice thing about when we do temporary events, it's our staff. We're, we're not pulling in catering companies or employing people that aren't part of us. It's, it's all Treehouse folks.
Okay. How many people do you think you would serve, maybe on a typical weekend day? What do you think that would look like?
Honestly, I, I couldn't say. As I said, with the three-beer limit, we just kind of flow people through. We expect this to be a lot of like trial, people coming through, "Hi, hey, I hear we can grab a beer in here." But we're not the place that anyone hangs out for, for four hours. So, with the occupancy of 2, what did we say?
298.
298, we expect people to just kind of shuffle through, and, and the hours are really spread out, so it's not going to be this mad dash, "Oh, Treehouse is open for two hours." We try to keep it pretty casual, so.
Yeah, I've noticed that about your operations. Do you, when you sell tickets online, do you limit the number of tickets or the times of the tickets, that kind of thing?
Yep. You can only buy three max online, so, yeah.
All right. And then, tell me a little bit, I've had questions from residents about this. Tell me a little bit about not having food, not serving food when you're pouring alcohol.
So, we, because we have, we're not going to be opening up the kitchen here, and we're staying away from that piece, but we would really welcome the opportunity to have Tewksbury Food Trucks come on in. We're not serving or preparing, but folks are always welcome in all our locations to bring food, eat in one of our food trucks and come on in. We, we very much welcome that. We, we're just not asking the Health Department for permission to run a restaurant.
All right.
Got it.
Thank you. That answers all my questions.
Thank you.
On this side of the room?
I, I, yes, I have a couple of questions. So, the tents, how many seating will this hold?
I'm actually going to defer to my colleague Nicole here to talk about the tents.
So, we will have a 199 occupancy within the tent.
And then, how much inside the, the...
99 within the tent.
99. So, we're talking close to 300, maybe? And construction is going to be going on at the same time?
Correct.
Okay. So, right now, you do not brew anything in the location, right? So, you'll be bringing, you'll be transporting everything that's going to be sold there?
That's correct.
So, how frequent will deliveries be taking if you're going to be doing this for 30 days?
The delivery right now from our inventory control team, it'll be at the same time. So, currently, our trucks deliver at 7:30 in the morning, and we plan to have all the products that we need for this tent, temporary tent structure to be at that same time.
Yeah, so, so is it one truck, two trucks? What's, one truck will deliver everything... Like, what's, one truck will deliver everything for the day?
Yes.
To be able to handle the, the crowds that are expected there?
Yep.
And what about the, what's being sold at the store? The, you know, the, what you, you also have a, you know, you're selling bottles at the, at the post, what, is that on that same truck?
All the same truck, nope. There would, there'll be no additional trucks coming in to deliver here.
Currently, right now, the trucks that are coming to site will have multiple stops in the day, so if need be, the truck that delivers to Tuxbury that day, it'll be a sole, sole truck strictly for Tuxbury, so it'll deliver for products for both locations.
Okay. That's just my concern, if that, once this opens, and I've mentioned it, it's, it's going to be, you know, you're putting a tent up, it, everybody's want to come, everybody's interested. And so, as far as I'm concerned, you're creating the circus. You know, you're putting a tent up, people are going to want to come, and everybody's going to be interested, and so they're going to want to come and check it out and do it. I love it, love the fact that people are going to do it. My concern is, is the mitigation around it. So, if everybody's coming, and I understand it's only three things, that means you're coming and going, coming and going, coming and going. That's a lot of traffic volumes that are going in and out of that. What's going in? You're going to have trucks coming in early in the morning, delivering it, you're going to have construction ongoing, so, you know, construction vehicles will be going in, doing the work on this, and so they'll be going in and out of here, and you'll have people trying to get in all at the same time. That sounds like a lot of traffic that's going to be generated all at the same time. I mean, has anybody looked at kind of traffic studies, or concerns of what you think is going to happen with this?
Yes, we have, for, and when we were before the planning board, and we were required to do a traffic assessment, and we produced that and satisfied the planning board.
So, there was, that was for the, for this, for the tent, or was it for, or like, I mean, this is a temporary permit, of what you're doing. So, you're using the parking lot that usually would be used for parking, so, because you're using part of that of wherever you're going to be doing it. If you're going to be bringing trucks in, you're going to be, where's all the equipment, where's the construction equipment going to be, that, that's going to be coming in to be doing the construction? Like, where are they going to be located?
I, that's something that I can't speak to specifically this evening, other than to say it will satisfy all of the requirements from the building commissioner.
I, I just was just wondering, like, if there's going to be a section that's going to be, I like the fact that it's going on the other side, because it's going away from the residents that are over there. But I do have some concerns with the traffic and the numbers that are going through there. I, I don't have a lot of information of what's going on, this came kind of quickly upon us. You know, three hundred temporary seating for this area, people being outside, construction ongoing while this is happening, still with the other business going, and I've seen that's pretty, there's a good crowd going in and out of there for deliveries, so that's going on. And so, it just doesn't seem like there's a lot of open space that's left, and there's going to be people going in and coming and going, that are going out of here, and, and construction ongoing. It just leads a lot of questions to me.
So, if I could just ask a couple of things that you've said. So, the construction on the clubhouse building is going to be the interior. We're not putting up additional facilities or doing any significant site work that would require a lot of heavier machinery that, that you would expect to see at a new construction site. So, I'm pretty confident in our ability to make sure that the vehicles that are there are going to be tucked away and out of the way, and not be an impediment to, to anyone there. And certainly, we'd like to keep them, you know, out of the operating business area. As far as the traffic goes, right now, or historically, Tuxbury Country Club as an event center has run events all at the same time in their four different locations. And so, for example, on a Saturday night, if they're running three weddings, and all of them start at six o'clock, all of the people that are going to those events arrive all at the same time. We actually represent a smoother come and go throughout the day with that limited amount of alcohol that you can purchase with us, so you're not going to have that mad rush. And that was one of the comments in the traffic assessment that we had, where this is actually kind of a slowdown of it. And as for the three hundred person occupancy, that is a large reduction to what is currently operating in the clubhouse for the events right now.
I, I get all of it, I, it's, you know, when we looked at the country club, and we looked at what goes on, yes, granted, they have weddings, they have their things, and it's, and a lot of it was focused around non-peak hours of the type of business that they did. I, I remember reviewing their permits when they came in to do this, you know, it just seemed like, you know, you were doing weddings, you were doing certain things, and it was, always seemed to be not during the evening commute. It was like, you know, six-thirty, seven o'clock, there was a lot of things that was happening inside there, and it was like, there wasn't things that were focused around four, three o'clock, people going through that area and commuting. And then, you know, in the morning, we wouldn't get a lot of morning things. Now, I'm not expecting a lot of people to be coming in there for your morning commute, to be going through this tent. But I am kind of concerned about the traffic going, like I said, you only allow three, which is great, but that leads to turnover. So, you know, when you go to a wedding, you go there and you stay there for four hours. You go to go play golf, you're there probably on that course at least five hours. But, now with this type of thing, it's, you come, you check it out, you have three, you go, somebody else comes. It's, it's a lot of turnover, and I just, I haven't seen it, I'm a little uncomfortable with it, I'll be honest. And it just, I, you know, I, I just want to see how it goes. You know, I, I would like to see some, you know, maybe some mitigation to say, you know, if we're going to be doing deliveries or construction, there was an area designated that nobody's going to be near it, especially people that are going to be drinking outside, that I don't want anybody wandering into any area that may be a construction. So, I want to make sure there's a nice plan, that nobody gets into any area where there's something going. If you're going to be building a brewery inside, I don't know what, I haven't seen, I, I leave that up to the planning board to do that, but giving licenses to be outside while all this is happening, I, I have a number of questions and concerns, that's all. But I'll leave up to, I'll listen to the rest of the board members to see what their thoughts are on it as well.
So, I just wanted to mention that we already are permitted in the clubhouse building for our Farmers Brewers and Farmers Distillery license.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Mr. Mackey, do you have questions or comments?
Comment and a couple of quick questions, I will be brief. We've talked about the timing, we've talked about occupancy, we've talked about the, this being contingent on the permitting, I am good with all of that, the paperwork appears in order. My first question is, I wanted to confirm, so the wristband comes with three beers included? Is that correct?
So, there's a different wristband, it's color-coded for what you had purchased. And then, say you got one, and then while you're on site, you decided to purchase more, that's something you would work with our staff. But, across all of our locations, anyone who's visited, visited there, we're, we're really strict about that. And on top of, you know, abiding by responsible alcohol service, really, it's important for us to be able to share our product with as many guests as we can, and so, that's why we do like that steady flow, and not folks, you know, parking there. But with that limited, allows us to open ourselves up to more members of the community to share our products with.
Okay. And then, through you to the town manager. So, this is my neophyte in this arena, so I haven't seen thirty-one days before. Local tax, all that is included, right? So, that's not a separate discussion, all sales tax, et cetera?
It's all the same.
Okay, perfect. And then my final question is, are any of the beverages that are going to be offered here during this, these events gluten-free?
Oh, that's an excellent question. No, I don't believe any of them will be gluten-free besides the water.
That's unfortunate, okay.
But, we do have an active farm in Woodstock, Connecticut, and we produce cider, both non-alcoholic and hard cider, and we welcome you to come out there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wallman.
All right, thank you. I don't have any specific questions. I, I, I do want to note, this is a public hearing, so we'll take some commentary from any interested parties in the back of the room in a moment, but I do want to acknowledge that the board received today an email from Ken and Hedgie Brown of forty-eight Eagle Drive. And I won't read their entire email, but in effect, they expressed concern about the notification for the hearing this evening, in terms of receiving their letter, it looks like yesterday. So, they had some concern about that, indicated they weren't able to attend tonight, but they had some concerns about noise and traffic. It's not clear whether the event's being held in the made building patio at the former restaurant patio, which you now have answered. And they asked us to, to be aware of those issues. And they ended with, they, they want to add that they want Treehouse to be successful, they have a beautiful property on Main Street. We're asking for notice, reasonable notice, from, from them. Now, I know that notification was provided by you to all of the abutters, and it's my understanding that that was not a requirement in this instance. So, I, you know, while I appreciate the concern that was registered, I obviously would encourage you, as we go forward in the future, try to keep in mind that, that perspective about ample notice for people. So, it's not, it wasn't required for tonight, but you can see the reaction that you get when, if something comes in at the eleventh hour. You want to comment on that?
I do, actually, thank you. I just wanted to say that we, we found out that it was not a requirement, but we did want to give notice, just so, you know, everybody could be aware in that we are, we want to include the community that surrounds Treehouse in all of sort of our future business plans, so we did want to give that notice, even though it wasn't required. We do apologize for the late notice, and know that at least fourteen days out, for any other notice, we will be sending certified letters.
Yeah, so we appreciate that, and, and I want to applaud the effort to do that, because I know it took a lot of work to get that done, so that is appreciated.
The, the US Postal Service is not happy with that right now.
They're not, no, and, and it's not a good time for them. And, and I want to make that known for residents who are here and who might watch this tomorrow or watching tonight, because they have an expectation of notices given in a certain period, right? So, in this instance, it wasn't, there wasn't a timeline that was a requirement, and that's important for all parties to be understanding of, so. All right, so with that said, are there any individuals in the room who have comment about this? I'm going to ask you to keep your comments specifically to the request, and if you would give us your name and address for the record. And, the hour is getting late, so I ask you to please be to the point. Thank you.
Thirty Lucille Drive, and by this that I apologize, but what is the cycle for people's reservations? How many people per fifteen-minute period? How's that work?
So, we're not currently instituting a fifteen-minute reservation system, but that may have been something that you've heard about our outpost and our Beer to Go, where we do have designated pickup times, and folks have been really great about abiding to them.
So, when someone gets a reservation, they could come at any point during the day?
So, we will be selling beer tickets online, and so it's not a reservation system. So, they can come at any time during the hours of operation.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if any, for Talia, eighty-one Windsor Drive. I have a real problem with the idea of a tent on that site for the residents that live in Eagle Drive. You have no idea how much noise is going to come out of that tent? With two hundred and ninety-eight people possibly in the tent, and the abutters that are right there, how many people, and you're shaking your head, not, not two ninety-eight?
The, the tent can only hold one ninety, or one ninety-nine, at, at most.
Okay, I thought I seen a two ninety-eight figure as far as the capacity.
Balance, the balance is in the existing building.
Pardon me?
The balance that they're referencing will be in the existing Tumac Tavern.
Okay. So, my question is, I mean, you have a facility you're going to take over in ten days, that has four function rooms in it, the lodge room and three other ones. Why can't you do the same thing inside the building, and coordinate your construction around that, rather than having to, you know, potentially, you know, put the residents that, that'll live there at a, at a, at a, at a peak of noise and so forth to the, to the neighbors?
Yeah, and just, just to be clear, please direct your comments to this table, okay? And, and they'll answer. I know you're a member of the planning board, and you know how that process works.
Yep.
But I want to be respectful to the petitioners here. So, can you answer that question?
Oh, certainly, through the chair. We are actually at the farthest possible place on the main campus that we could be from any residence, and the building is backed up against the rear of the McDonald's and the far side of the Market Basket Plaza. Also, this is winter programming, and it occurs inside, so our temporary tent structure, as stated previously, we are not requesting an entertainment license and do not anticipate really any noise impact to the residents around, because everything will be interior. And as for the reason why we're not having any programming within the clubhouse building is because we are anxious to get that work done as soon as possible, so we can open up for golf season.
Right, okay, okay.
All right, so my last question is, do you have any idea how much noise, Mr. Chairman, that they would be generating from the tent? Two hundred people in there? So, I mean, I guess that hasn't been addressed yet, but?
I, we have not been required to do any sort of noise study, but I really do not expect it to be terribly raucous in there.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like you guys to consider the residents that live down there, you know, with the possibility of having an issue. It's happened in town before at other locations, so you know what I'm discussing about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd also say that we have every intent to be excellent neighbors. We're here, we're thrilled to be in Tuxbury, talked about that the first time we were before you, you know, happy neighbors and a happy Tuxbury community, serving the community, and hopefully, all of our neighbors is part of the reason for this programming, so we look forward to welcoming all of our neighbors to, to our program.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Sherri Doten, twelve Eagle Drive. As a senior citizen, who, I'm on the second floor, and my bedroom window's face out, so I see all the traffic that, that goes in and out. So, I was wondering, you said you sell the tickets online, will you have any security for people that want to, that will walk up and want to try to get in to this little event that you guys are having?
So, we run locations across the state and in Connecticut, and we are fully staffed. We have parking lot attendants that are throughout the space. We're really not a bar, so we don't have bouncers at the door, but we have a really educated, friendly, comfortable staff that, as stated previously, is fully trained and TIPS certified, and any other safety precautions required, and we do our best to go above and beyond with our hospitality.
Okay.
So, technically, there'll be like no police officers or anybody there?
We have not planned to have any police officers.
Even just to run traffic, you know, to keep it running smoothly?
We have a staff that runs the traffic. We have parking lot attendants in all of our facilities.
Okay, like, well, like that gentleman said, I'm quite concerned about the noise situation, seeing as how, it's my bedroom, and, you know, if you're going to be open till ten, eleven o'clock at night, and you've got people going in and out, since you said it can only be there, what, fifteen minutes at a time, that's more than if we, you know, had a group of people going to a wedding and everything. So, that, that's my biggest concern, is the, the noise and the traffic.
Understood, thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Donahue, and I live on Eagle Drive. My concern is the traffic. The only egress from our condominium association is on to Livingston, and the only egress from the country club is the same. Now, to get out of both places, and finally get on to Livingston, then you, then you're faced with traffic lights. So, my question is, what on earth is going to happen if we have an emergency? How will the people get there when someone's in dire need of help?
Yep, and I, I don't know that there's a direct answer, but I do know that our public safety officers are certainly aware of all the obligations that are attendant with that area, and we have to rely on their input, and as it comes to traffic and safety, so.
I just wish they were serving food instead of just drinking. I would rather they had a little party, dancing, and, and having food, not just sitting there guzzling beer and wine. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. One moment. We have one more speaker. Mr. Champa?
Thank you. Jonathan Champa, 21 Susan Drive. You know, in sort of analyzing the difference between 300 people going to the country club for a wedding event versus 300 people going to the tent, has anybody looked at whether or not there's adequate lighting and pedestrian safety? Because now you're funneling what was a large parking lot going centrally into a building that it was facing. Now, everybody's going to be funneled through those drive lanes and around that turnaround into that back corner. There's less lighting. Obviously, the golf course is not that concerned about after-dark operations, but during January, about half of your time is going to be twilight and dark hours. And not necessarily from personal experience, but, you know, people that have had their three beers, I've had, some of your beers have quite a high ABV. They're excellent. But, you know, people coming back out, we have to be concerned about their safety. And I would just, that would be something that I would be very concerned about, is people, you're going to have 300 people, not all at once, but, you know, in a cycle, like you said, constantly streaming back and forth through the parking lot and where we're potentially looking at a higher turnover for traffic. I'm not sure that we have adequate lighting, wayfaring signage, crosswalks, or any other sort of pedestrian right-of-way. And I don't think that the people going there will really be looking out for that. I think they're going to be trying to get in and find the closest space, similar to what a shopping mall is right now. So, that would be a concern that I would ask the board to consider while reviewing their decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last chance. Okay, can I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. That will be unanimous. So, the public hearing is closed. We'll move to our deliberation. Do any of my colleagues have any further comment?
One question, Mr. Chairman. So, you mentioned that you have parking attendant staff. Do you have any idea how many are planned to be on during these events? Because the number of the concerns outside of noise, I think, could be mitigated by that. If you have appropriate number of staff, I don't know what that number is, but managing the parking and the ingress-egress, not only from Eagles Landing but from Livingston, I think we could probably mitigate a lot of those concerns.
Certainly, and that's very much part of all of our operations in all of our locations. We have a job code that is parking lot attendant, and as business picks up, we add more parking lot attendants. And when the thing's quiet down, we staff as appropriate. So, we are incredibly interested in safe and comfortable and frictionless experience with us. It's really important to us. It's our first time opening to the public in some capacity in Tuxbury that we get this right. We've committed that to Tuxbury and to every municipality. We meet our commitments. I can, I'm sure our town manager can attest to other town managers of the other municipalities we operate in have written letters on our behalf to say that, you know, they met their commitments and did what they said, and that is our full intention and the expectation you can have here in Tuxbury.
So, just to clarify, I didn't hear a number in there. I know it sounds like it's a sliding scale based on attendance, but is there like a minimum or a band you could, that we could expect to see?
Oh, a band, I would say probably three to five. But again, that's as needed, and we have a really capable operations team that manages that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. There was a good question that was brought up about the lighting, and I didn't hear any response on that. So, there's talking about, you know, you are going to be in the back, which is in the back of the building, and it's very dark back there, but a lot of that lighting may go, you know, shine out of that area. So, is there any, what, do you have a lighting plan or anything that's been for this tent in this area?
I'm not sure that I would consider it. Very dark out there. It's surrounded by a really significant project right next to it with the Market Basket and the McDonald's that is open, extends our hours of operation there. And one of the concerns that we've been trying to do is net neutral or net negative lighting, so we aren't adding additional lighting in this facility, and it meets all of the code.
Any further motions, questions, discussion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the manager. Can we take all of these 30-day licenses and approve them in one, or do we need to approve a license, do we need to do 30 separate votes? Please tell me it's just one vote.
Yeah, I think you can approve them all in one, but they are separate.
Yes.
If we have any issues throughout the 30 days, we can stop the licenses, you know, but you can make one vote.
So, as we go forward on this experiment, should there be an issue, and we can bring that back to you, and you've been very responsive and working on...
Certainly, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion for the approval of 31-day liquor licenses for...
Beer and wine?
Beer and wine. Really, just beer. Beer and wine for Treehouse Brewing, with the hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., beginning January 6, 2023, and terminating on February 9, inclusive 2023, excluding Tuesdays.
And would you add to your motion that that is contingent on all the safety and building requirements?
I'll accept that friendly amendment, sir.
Has been referenced earlier.
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second for comment, Mr. Chairman. So, these dates, our next meeting is January 10. I expect no issues based on the professionalism of your organization, but should something happen, these are individual licenses, so for the audience, we could take this backup in the future if needed. And with that, I will second Ms. Wellman's motion.
Okay. Okay. So, we have a motion. And before I call for a vote, I just want to add, and I think we may have talked about this when you were here last time, but you can tell from some of the comments, this town has a number of locations where there are commercial interests that abut residential neighborhoods, and in many cases, they involve liquor licenses, sale of liquor. So, there has been a number of historical issues, so there's a lot of sensitivity around that. So, it's my way of just counseling you to be aware of that environment and, you know, anything you can do to be a good neighbor. I hear it throughout all of your comments, past and present. It seems like it's part of your DNA and culture at Treehouse, from what I can see. I've never been to one of your facilities, but looking on your website and talking to friends who have, it comes across loud and clear. So, I think with the spirit in which you represent your organization, I just urge you to keep that in mind. It's a unique environment that you're in here in Tuxbury, and you have some neighbors. It's an over 55 community, and it literally is on your doorstep. So, anything that you can do to continue to have communication with them and address their concerns, you don't need us to be in the middle on that. I hope there's an open door to allow them to reach out to you somehow when that's necessary. And ideally, you and they would address those concerns and be in a position to take care of that without town government getting involved. Hopefully, that's the case. And I know that's the spirit in which you sit here, and I think the residents that live in that area, for the most part, have an open mind about that as well. And I'm hopeful that we'll find a way to make this successful for everybody. Change is often difficult, and we've had a long run with prior establishment that was well-regarded in Tuxbury. You deserve a fair shot to show you're equivalent or better in terms of reputation over time. Doesn't happen overnight, but you have to earn that. So, I know you understand what I'm saying, but there's a stewardship that's required here, and I trust that you'll make that effort to make that happen. So, all right, we have a motion and we have a second. And just for our recording secretary, the motion was made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. So, at this time, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so the chair will note that Ms. Wellman, Mr. Mackey are in favor, Mr. Crapman is opposed, and I will vote in favor as well. So, that will be a three-to-one vote. And again, we will continue to work with you and wish you well, and we'll be listening for feedback.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to move to residents and ask if there's any residents who want to talk on any other topic this evening. All right, we're going to pick up some pace here. The next order of business, we have Tuxbury Auto Service, a transfer of a used car dealer's license. Gentlemen, welcome. Thanks for your patience.
Good luck. Thank you.
Please grab a chair, and if you don't mind, just introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Masood Bouzir, I'm the current owner of ND Autos Inc., Baga Motors, and it's going to go to Mr. Mohammed after that, he's the new tenant of Baga Motors.
All right.
Mohammed Alomari.
Mohammed, okay.
Damar Alkazir.
Okay. And are you connected with Mohammed?
Yeah, we are.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing on the transfer of the license. So, could I ask my colleagues to make a motion to waive their reading of the hearing notice?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Crapman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well. So, we waived the hearing, waived the reading of the hearing notice. Excuse me. All right, so, sir, can you just explain, you're transferring your license to them? Are you selling your business?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And the current name of the business is ND Autos Inc., doing business as Baga Motors?
Correct.
Okay.
So, they're going to keep Baga Motors, D.A. Baga Motors on their...
So, it'll be Tuxbury Auto Service LLC?
Correct.
Yes, doing business as Baga.
Doing business as Baga, yeah.
Okay, very good. Very good. And gentlemen, do you have prior history in this industry?
Oh, yes, so we have six locations, actually.
You do?
Yeah.
In the region?
We have two in Middleton, one in North Andover, one in Wakefield, and one in North Running.
Good for you.
Yeah.
That's a lot on your plate.
Thank God, yes. But it's going well.
And are one of you going to be present here in Tuxbury?
Yeah, he will be, actually.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from my colleagues? No? Okay. So, we have, I think everything is in order. We've had, all of our departments have signed off. If there's no questions, I'll ask for a motion. Up, before we do that, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who has comments on this matter. Okay, now I'll ask if there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the used car dealer license class through as presented.
Thank you. All right, so a motion was made by Mr. Crapman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to vote in the affirmative as well. So, I want to thank you for your patience for that minute and a half of fame, right? And congratulations, good luck, and thank you for investing in Tuxbury.
Thank you so much. Have a good night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
You too.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is we're going to set dates for the annual and special town meeting. The town manager has presented us with a memorandum in accordance with the general bylaw. The town meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 1, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. at Tuxbury Memorial High School. And the special town meeting is recommended to be held on Wednesday, May 3, 2023, at 7:00 p.m., also at Tuxbury Memorial High School. And I just want to ask, Mr. Montori, last year, we ran into a conflict on a religious holiday. Have we checked that? Are we on safe grounds?
Yeah, we should be on safe grounds.
Okay, well, I don't know. I'm getting old, I can't recall. All right, so can I ask for a vote to adopt those dates and times and location?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. And then, the second aspect of that discussion would be, we need to open the warrant, which would be starting tomorrow, December 21, 2022, and take a vote to close the warrant effective at 4:30 p.m. on Friday, February 17, 2023. If there's any discussion or questions about that recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the manager through you. It seems early to be opening the warrant tomorrow?
Actually, it's not. We've done it the last couple of years. We started opening early and closing it earlier once we had to mail the warrant.
No, I feel like the February date makes sense. I just think...
Yeah, we usually...
I thought we opened it in January.
Yeah, we just, we've done, the last couple of years, we've done a little bit earlier.
Okay.
So, we'll get word out and get some people going on it.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Wellman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey, seconded. All those in favor of opening the warrant tomorrow, Wednesday, 12, 21, 22, and closing it at 4:30 p.m. on Friday, February 17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well. That would be unanimous. Okay, we also need to discuss the town election ballot, and we were notified that there's a vacancy on the housing authority. And we also, previously, as a board, took action to fill an unexpired seat, excuse me, on the planning board that's now occupied by Mr. Champa. So, we are being asked to vote to put those two unexpired seats on the annual town election ballot for April 1, 2023.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman. Is there a second?
Second for comment, Mr. Chairman. So, we are putting both the housing authority, two-year unexpired term, and the planning board, two-year unexpired term, correct?
That's the motion, yep.
Perfect. Second.
You want to second that? Okay. All right, so we have a motion made and a second to place both of those unexpired terms on the annual town election ballot. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will make that unanimous. That brings us to, we have review of entertainment licenses, but I don't have them in my packet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is for the...
Do you want to discuss those, Mr. Montori?
So, I had sent the board previously just some entertainment licenses that had a TV as part of their entertainment license, or a radio as part of their entertainment license, music in the background as their entertainment license. And the feeling was, for those one-offs, it didn't make sense to charge them and make them go through the process of an entertainment license. They have, and they've been very good about it, but for some of them, it didn't, for those, it just didn't make sense. Others that have multiple entertainment within their establishment had the TV, and that's fine, but for those one-offs, I gave the board a list...
They were four or five.
Yeah, they were like four or five. We recommend that, you know, they're not needed. We can refund them there if they've paid, we can refund them their money, and in the future, just not require a TV or a radio as an entertainment license. Now, if someone comes in with a, you know, a sports bar that has, you know, many TVs, that's something the board would take up differently, and we're just talking about some of that has a sandwich shop with a TV.
So, just to be clear, for those paying attention to this discussion, right, there are four or five license holders currently that have a single television, and that's what we're talking about. And the license fee, I think, is $25?
It's $25, whether you have one TV or whether you have... It's $25, whether you have one TV or whether you have, you know, dancing and DJs and bands.
And there are another set of entertainment licenses that have numerous activities or amplification systems or other equipment that pertains to entertainment bands, et cetera. So we're only talking about those that have that single television set.
Single radio.
Or radio.
Or radio, yep, thank you for the clarification. Okay, so I know you sent all that to us in advance, which I appreciate, so do my colleagues have further questions about it? Mr. Mackey?
One quick question, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, the town manager, Mr. Montori, is there a definition we need to update somewhere so that we don't have to revisit this in the future?
Yeah, we're going to update the application.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so if there's no further concern or questions, may I ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive the requirement for a entertainment fee for television or radio, single television or radio, for establishments in Tuxbury.
Second.
Okay, all right, so the motion was offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll vote in the affirmative as well. And we'd ask you, Mr. Montori, to take those steps if you can cancel or avoid out those and refund if they've paid. That would be appropriate. Thank you. All right, do you want to speak to the Lowell Five donation?
I was contacted by Lowell Five in regard to a donation they would like to provide to the town in regard to public safety. They have done this in the past, where they've given money in the past specifically to the fire department for fire equipment. At the year-end meetings, they determine they have additional funding that they can provide donations to the communities within their area, and they asked if we could utilize $3,000 for public safety. The fire department would like to utilize it for equipment for their trucks and training. Lowell Fire was excited to do this once again, and I just need the board to accept the donation for the fire department to be used for training and equipment.
Any questions? If not, could I ask for a motion to accept that generous donation?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Agreed.
Chair will vote aye as well, and I assume you'll issue proper correspondence, thanking Lowell Five for their generosity. Terrific. Okay, that brings us to the town manager's portion of the agenda. Do you know about town council invoice?
Just the town council invoice, I asked the board to approve town council's invoice from November 16 through November 30, in the amount of $4,122.50.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion's made to approve by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative, making that unanimous. Okay, that brings us to minutes. We have two sets of minutes in the packet, July 25, 2022, and November 22, 2022. Mr. Kratman, have you reviewed these?
Yes, I have. Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation to approve the minutes for July 25, 2022, and November 22, 2022.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll make that a unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to board member reports. Let me start at my right, Ms. Wellman.
Really quickly, I want to invite the public to a menorah lighting tomorrow night on the Common at 5:30, and remind folks that students and staff are moving into the Center Elementary School on January 5, and we ask the community to please be patient as traffic patterns adjust and bus routes develop, and congratulate the school department on the completion and the moving into that new school, it's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one comment, the window closes for the senior citizens and veteran property tax work-off program on December 28. So if you're interested in that program or have been waiting for that program, that paperwork is available for pickup in the town manager's office. Mr. Montori, is this also available on the website?
It should be, but I'll have to double-check that.
Okay, thank you.
What's the entry age on that? Today's senior citizen is what age?
I'd have to go back and look, but it's...
Am I almost there?
I want to see if I'm getting close. I'd have to go back and look.
Am I close?
Yeah, you're close. We're all close.
Some more than others.
More than others, yes.
Do you have anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kratman, how about you?
Someone that's reaching that age, I don't like that question. I really have no board member reports, I just want to wish everybody happy holidays, or Christmas, whatever you may be celebrating. I hope everybody have a safe and enjoyable holiday, and every board report's await the next meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I want to thank my colleagues, we close out the year, so I want to just recognize a few things. I think we've had a great year in 2022 in many respects in our community. Not unlike any other, we've had our challenges as well, but I want to thank my colleagues for their patience and their effort in helping to keep moving Tuxbury forward. I want to thank the town manager and his staff for their work and effort. It's constant, and it's always much appreciated. And as I was thinking about my holiday, Christmas stocking, I thought the stocking for Tuxbury this year would be actually kind of full. I thought we should be looking back and celebrating. If we reached into our stocking, we'd find a new fire station in Tuxbury that just opened up. As Ms. Wellman just mentioned, we're about to have a brand-new elementary school in our community, which is another terrific gift to the town of Tuxbury, thanks to the voters who supported that. Thankfully, we have almost a rebuilt Route 38 that doesn't do damage to our suspensions any longer, and we're in a good place on that, making great progress. In 2022, we adopted a new zoning bylaw overhaul that has tremendous value and potential for the town of Tuxbury, and got us into the current day with respect to a lot of the concerns that people had. And then the last item I thought of was, as we came out of our annual town meeting, for the first time in our history, I think we hit an all-time high in our stabilization budget, which is something that most of us day-to-day don't think about, but it's sleep insurance. When the bad things happen, we've put ourselves in a position to be able to weather the storm, if you will. And that's not by luck, that's by hard work, and it's by the support of our residents who have funded and supported all five of those things that I mentioned. So I want to express gratitude to the community for seeing the vision and in helping us to accomplish those significant accomplishments along the way. We have other things on the horizon, and hopefully, 2023 will be another positive and bright year for the town of Tuxbury. With that, I will ask if we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you. Have a safe and healthy holiday season. Good night.